This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held August 2nd, 2022 at 6:00 PM at the Council Chambers Building. If you'd take the roll call, please.
Councilmember Henry is absent. Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Curat? Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Wildon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Here.
Mayor Olensky?
Here.
Thank you. If you'd all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Any councilmembers have anything? Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
No, not this time, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, councilmember. Vice Mayor Narin. The city staff has requested a qualifications for a construction manager at risk for the design constructibility review and the construction of the Cottonwood City Hall. We'll be holding pre-proposal meeting on August 16th, and statements of qualifications are due back by August 25th. CAT, Cottonwood Area Transit, did not go back to its four routes as planned due to COVID outbreak over at the transit center. Our transit manager will provide a notice when it is ready to return to the normal routes after, of course, once COVID has run its course. Currently, we have the manager and supervisor out with COVID, and a couple of drivers are also ill, not sure if it's COVID or not at this point. One has returned after his protocols. There's also registration for the 20th Annual Cottonwood Cooler Golf Challenge hosted by the Greater Arizona Chamber of Commerce, Greater Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce. It will close tomorrow, August 3rd. If you're interested in registering, visit cottonwoodchamberaz.org. We also have registration is now open for the after-school program organized by the Cottonwood Parks and Recreation Department. After-school care will be offered weekdays, and students will enjoy homework help, crafts, and a variety of activities. Contact Dana Dowell at (928) 639-3200 for more information. The Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission is currently seeking new members to join and help make a difference in our community. Applications being accepted through August 12th and can be found online at cottonwoodaz.gov. And finally, join us for the final dive-in movie at the outdoor pool on Saturday, August 20th. We will be enjoying the movie Finding Nemo, and the entry fee is free with pizza available for purchase. Gates open at 7:45. Follow the Parks and Recreation Department on Facebook for any updates on that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have the call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, and comments are limited to a three-minute time period. And I do have one yellow slip. There are yellow slips in the back, so if there's anybody else from the public that would like to speak, please fill out a yellow slip for us. Thank you. And so we will be calling up Ms. Jill Schmitzko. I hope I said that relatively well.
Jill works just fine.
Okay, Jill. Thank you.
So I just had a wanted to present one of the challenges here in Old Town and driving through and parking, not tonight, but most nights, especially on the weekends, there's a parking challenge. And I just wanted to have everybody food for thought for that idea for future. I know it's not in the budget, and it's not going to go right away, but if there's maybe one of the lots back there can be turned into maybe a parking deck, or we have a shuttle with off parking for the area that could be shuttled in. I know we're probably not at that capacity here in Old Town yet, but maybe for events. And also an idea, and I hate to even mention this because I'm a resident around here, it don't work in Old Town, but if the employees could park elsewhere that work at the, it'll open up a lot of parking also available to the, for Old Town to, people to come in to go to the restaurants and everything. So that's just an idea, food for thought. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? And if not, we will close the floor to the public. Next, we have approval of minutes for the regular meeting of July 19th, 2022. And I'll move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Vice Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Wildon seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, then we'll move on to unfinished business. We have one item, ordinance number 716, amending designated sections of the city's zoning ordinance to allow public utility buildings, structures, or appurtenances as conditional uses under revised development standards, second and final reading.
Vice Mayor and council, there was no comments on this particular item. However, we do have Scott Ellis here available in case there's any questions for this particular item.
No questions for me.
Okay. All right, well, if there's no questions, is there any other discussion that council would like to have?
Did the motion?
Sure.
I move to adopt ordinance 716, amending zoning ordinance sections 410, 411, 412, 413, 414, 415, 416, 425, and 428 to allow public utility facilities as conditional uses with revised flexible development standards.
Second.
Councilmember Matthews made the motion, and Councilmember Wildon seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Curat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, then we will move on to the consent agenda.
Let me to read the.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please.
Ordinance number 716, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending sections pertaining to conditional uses of public utility buildings, structures, or appurtenances.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. And I'll just read these out real quick. We've got item number one is Managed Information Technology Services Agreement with Cloud IT LLC. Item number two is Resolution Number 3145, Appointing a Member to the City's Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Local Board. And that seems to be all of the consent agenda items. Is there any item that a council member or a member of the public would like to have pulled? No? Okay, then I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Kurat seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, and that will take us to new business. Item, oh, I'm sorry, yes, if you'd read the resolution, please, by title only.
Resolution Number 3145, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Ron Collis a member of the city's Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Local Board and establishing his term of office.
Okay.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. New business, the following items are for council discussion consideration on possible legal action. Item number one is Interview of Applicants for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Wilper, HR Director. We have one vacancy on our planning and zoning commission currently. We advertised the positions and received two applications, so we have done the blind review already, and both applicants, Elizabeth Marks and Robert Nelson, are here to interview with you tonight.
Okay, thank you. Well, we will start with Elizabeth Marks, then.
Hello, councilmembers, and thank you for allowing me to present in front of you tonight. And thank you for your patience. I was supposed to be here in June, took a tumble down some stairs, had some issues, but here I am.
I'm slightly familiar with issues.
So we can talk, but.
But welcome tonight, Ms. Marks. So we just have a few questions we're going to ask everybody, so we'll start with, why do you want to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
My husband and I moved up here part-time in 2018. Two years ago, after he retired, we moved up here full-time. I have really been keeping an eye on the growth in Cottonwood, and I'd like to be an integral part of that and support it and watch this town, city, grow even bigger than it has. There's a lot of opportunities here for people and business, and I'd like to be a part of that.
Okay, and number two, what specific development experience do you have that qualifies you to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Back in Massachusetts, I was on the Community Planning Division for the Department of, Massachusetts Department of Education. Went out to, it's called the Southeast Corridor in Massachusetts, and worked with several colleges, businesses, and folks who really needed housing, education, et cetera. Worked with them doing focus groups, community interest groups, developed an assets and needs plan, and just continued from there. And the community grew, and then I came here.
Okay. What do you want to accomplish as a planning and zoning commissioner?
Well, as I had mentioned, I see the growth in Cottonwood, and I'd like to see the continued growth and get to know the community much better than I have in the past two years, and see some systemic change and opportunities for people with housing, homeless, education, parking.
Does council have any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Marks.
I thank you.
Do you have a different page than I do? Okay. Well, next then, we will speak with Robert Nelson, please. Good evening.
Good evening. She's got way more experience than me, so I just probably just call it a night. No, thank you so much for allowing me to come and speak with you tonight. And thank you for your help on the email.
And thank you for being here. So we're just going to ask you the same questions we asked her.
Okay.
So why do you want to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
So my wife and I moved here about nine months ago from the suburb of Los Angeles, California. Thank goodness we got out. And I have a lot of musical experience. I worked over 35 years in federal and city governments, as a civil engineer and an architect at LA Unified School District as an architect. So I kind of get what you guys do, especially with the cities. I was more on the execution side in public works than in the planning side. So I thought, you know, there's an opportunity, so maybe I can maybe help out with the planning side for a bit.
Okay. What specific development experience do you have that qualifies you to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
So over 35 years in public government as a project manager, we built 200 schools in LA. I was a project manager in the architecture component of it. So I've built everything from skate parks to aquatic centers to schools. The best project was a skate park for the little guys. You know, we brought a skate park in, and everybody said skaters are a bad part of it. So you build them a skate park, and then they were the best kids in the world. So yeah, I have quite a bit of experience in project management, project development. But again, always on the execution side, never on the planning side.
Okay. And what do you want to accomplish as a planning and zoning commissioner?
I'm not moving again. That was a really bad experience. Luckily, my wife still is my wife. So we're going to stay here. We're not moving, and I just want to give something back to the new community that I think I can bring some experience, some culture. She has way more agenda items than I do. I just want to help out with the community and see if I can make a little bit of a difference with my experience.
Okay. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Nelson? No? All right, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a nice night.
Then we will move on to item number two, Resolution Number 3144, Minor General Plan Amendment. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, Council. Scott Ellis, Community Development Director. This resolution is for a minor general plan amendment that is required for the item following this on the agenda, for the rezone to community facility that we proposed first reading at the last meeting. There's two parcels, one owned by Cottonwood Oak Creek School District and one owned by Mingus Union High School. This is more of a formality so that the land use map matches what the zoning is. With that being said, I can answer any questions on that.
All right, council, do we have any questions?
No.
We haven't had any comments or questions or anything from our end as well, from citizens.
That seems pretty straightforward to me, too.
I move.
Certainly.
I move to approve Resolution 3144.
Second.
Councilmember Wildon made the motion, and Councilmember Kurat seconded it. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Curat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so would you please read Resolution Number 3144 by title only?
Resolution Number 3144, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving a minor amendment to the city's general plan, changing the land use designation of a parcel of land located on the west side of Quail Trail, approximately 700 feet north of Mingus Avenue, from residential low density to public semi-public institutional, and a parcel of land located at the southeast corner of Burr Street and Camino Realce from general commercial to public semi-public institutional. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. All right, item number three is Ordinance Number 715, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, for approximately 93 acres of land owned by the city, Yavapai County, and local school districts, from the current zoning designations of R1, R3, AR20, and CO, formerly county zoning, to CF, community facility, second and final reading.
Madam Vice Mayor, Council, again, there's been no comments, questions, any concerns on this one since the first reading.
Okay, any questions from council?
No.
Okay.
I move to adopt ordinance 715.
Second.
Councilmember Wildon made the motion, and Councilmember Kurat seconded it. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Curat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And then, do you read the ordinances, too? So if you'd please read ordinance 715.
Ordinance Number 715, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, for approximately 93 acres of land owned by the city, Yavapai County, and local school districts, from the current zoning designations of R1, R3, AR20, and CO, former county zoning, to CF, community facility. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Item number four is Professional Services Agreement with Last Architects for Design of a New City Hall and Other Related Professional Services. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, or Madam Vice Mayor, Mayor, members of council. My name is David Hausman. I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Cottonwood. Tonight I have a presentation for consideration and approval of a design contract with Last Architects for the design of the new city hall facility for a not-to-exceed fee of $1,388,794. On September 21st, 2021, council approved the purchase of a building located at 635 North Main Street, formerly known as Rough Cut, for completion and build-out of the new city hall. A request for qualifications was issued for the design of the new city hall, and seven architectural firms responded with statements of qualifications. A selection committee made up of city staff and one outside local contractor ranked the submittals based on qualifications. The top four ranked firms were selected to be interviewed. The same committee interviewed the four firms, and based on the combination of the SOQ scores as well as the interview scores, Last Architects was invited to submit a proposal for the design of the new city hall. The fee proposal, which is within your packets, was negotiated between city staff and Last Architects, along with their team of subconsultants for complete design deliverables. So the proposed services included the following phases. So we have project administration and coordination, space planning and programming, conceptual design, schematic design, design development, construction documents and specifications, construction administration, and furniture fixtures and equipment, also known as FFNE. So this is a full-service agreement, which includes all construction plans and specifications for all building systems. Within the current proposal, it is estimated to be completed within 51 weeks following the notice to proceed. Also, I have with me tonight Brad Lang and Justin Trexler with Last Architects. I'd love to have them come up here and introduce themselves, as well as answer any questions council may have.
Okay. Does council have any questions for Mr. Hausman?
Yes, I do. Where did they fall among, or where was the second bid come in? Was that higher, lower, close, or where did that fall?
It was really close. And they're not bids, they're statement of qualifications. So what we do is we score applicants on the SOQs of what they submit in the package. We then rank the top four. We brought the top four in, and we sat down as a panel and interviewed them. They presented a presentation, we had questions for them, each member ranked them, and then we ranked them in an order.
This is not a fair question. Why were they selected, in your opinion?
My opinion, they were selected because they were the most qualified applicant who submitted, in regards to their experience, their past work performance that they've done, working on city halls and like facilities. Definitely the most qualified applicant. And the whole committee felt that way.
Any other questions for Mr. Hausman?
Not yet.
Okay, well, then we will let the other gentleman introduce themselves.
Hi, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Brad Lang. I am the principal and co-founder of Last Architects, and we were very excited and ecstatic to be chosen to be your design architect for your new city hall. Like Mr. Hausman said, we come to you with many years of experience, many projects in our past portfolios of success at the civic and public realms, and we are ready to get started on your project. It's going to be an amazing facility. And happy to answer any questions you have of us.
Okay.
Okay.
So, and this is for staff and for you also. So it does say the fee is not to exceed $1,388,000 and change. Does that mean it could come in less? Or is that, is that the price?
That is the price.
Okay. So, and looking at the scope of work, you've got certain things on like two trips out for this, three trips out for that. If you exceed that, can we expect to be billed extra for those things?
For trips out, yes. Some of our subconsultants do have limits on their travel. I don't believe the architects, us, Last Architects, have a limit on our travel per se, but some of our subconsultants do.
Okay, so I mean, you essentially looked at all this in detail, and you're quite confident, everybody's confident, staff included, that we're probably not going to get into a position and exceed those numbers, then?
To sneak those, no. Oh, exceed, no. The only provisions for that fee going up is if the scope of work were to change. If you were to add or take away a part of the project, then yes, the fee could be reduced.
Where are you located?
We are based in Phoenix, Arizona.
Second question, what's the closest project you've worked on that's going to be similar to this one?
So our team has worked on, I would say the closest would be the city hall in Surprise, correct? Yeah. The city hall in Surprise would probably be the closest programmatically to this project. We have spent, again, my business partner, Eric, who will be the project architect or design architect, our interior designer, who is also going to be on the team as well, aren't joining us today, but their portfolios, all of our portfolios, have been spent in the civic, public, campus realm. So we are very familiar with working with projects of this scale, this size, this complexity of these budgets designed to last a very long time.
I'm familiar with Surprise project. Excuse me, did you go over? Excuse me, did you go over or under budget, or come right in, or how did you do on that one?
I personally did not work on that project, so I don't want to speculate.
Could you get back to me on that, just FYI?
Of course. Yes, not a problem.
Any other questions from council?
Well, I think you guys answered the things I was, or asked what I was wondering as well. I know we've been, we've taken a long time to get here, to decide to purchase a building and do a city hall, so I know I'm very excited about getting started. So, thank you both for coming and talking to us tonight.
Yes, of course.
Take the motion?
Sure.
I move to approve the proposed contract with Last Architects for the design of the new city hall and other related professional services for a not-to-exceed fee of $1,388,794.
Second.
Councilmember Matthews made the motion, and Councilmember Wildin seconded it. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Curat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naren?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Item number six is Resolution number 3143, declaring the city's official intent to reimburse itself from the proceeds of future debt obligations for expenses incurred in connection with the completion and build-out of the building located at 635 North Main Street for use as a new city hall.
Madam Vice Mayor, we're on item five, sorry.
Did I miss one? I'm sorry, let's go back. Item number five. That means I have to say that all again, right? Item number five, Professional Services Agreement with Point Engineers for Design Services for Main Street Improvements. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, Mayor, council members. Tonight, I present to you a proposed agreement with Point Engineers for the design of Main Street improvements. Back in January, work on Main Street was identified as a priority and a possibility with city council. Following that retreat, staff issued a request for qualifications for Main Street Design Services. We received four qualified statements of qualifications, and they were ranked by a review panel. Based on that review, the highest proposer was Point Engineers to design Main Street improvements from the city limits on the north end near Gray Fox Ridge to where we tie in with State Route 89A at Cottonwood Street. So, scope of this work includes everything needed for pavement investigation for the existing, pavement replacement. We're looking at lighting at the crosswalks. We're looking at utilities, drainage, and one of the big components of this, because of the scope of the pavement, is the ADA improvements, which is the Americans with Disabilities requirements that we have to upgrade and bring to current standards, all those features. So, this project will deliver actually two construction sets of plans and deliverables, one being the pavement from Gray Fox City Limits to State Route 89A, and the other looks at intersection improvements with Main Street and 10th Street, which is an offset intersection. The engineer will look at options for that, including realignment and a roundabout there. So, the amount of that agreement is not to exceed, again, $564,711. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
With city hall going in around 10th, there's going to have to be something there, I would suspect. So, you say they're going to look at it, or how's that going to work?
So, first task in that intersection would be to evaluate options. Can we realign that? Get it lined up to where it functions better, since that intersection is offset. Second would be, once they determine what the best course of action there is, they would design those improvements. They would deliver those construction plans to us as a separate document. We could bid them both at the same time. We could bid them separately, depending on schedule and direction of council.
So, that's included?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, I think that answered my question. This is going to be part of that, right? That whatever we're going to do with that intersection.
The design and construction documents will be included.
Okay, and it'll be executed at the same time we do the rest of it?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Madam Vice Mayor, if I may?
Of course.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there's another intersection that we look at, which is, I know we plan to look at some traffic calming features for the North Willard intersection on the other end of Old Town, but I just want to make sure that that's going to be included in the scope of work. And then, the other point I wanted to make is, when we do plan for lighting, or any other signage improvements along that corridor, and we remember that's our arts, culture, and entertainment district, so I'd like to see us try to incorporate at least some thematic elements to Old Town, to whatever, you know, lighting or signage that be approved along that corridor, so we try to meet the district and with Old Town. Thank you.
To answer your question, Mr. Alinsky, Mayor Alinsky, North Willard is part of this design. They will look at options to provide some traffic calming on that traffic coming into Old Town from the Clarkdale side, potentially having a turnaround there for traffic that wants to turn around back to Old Town, or, you know, potentially, I don't want to say roundabout, but, you know, something with the amount of real estate that we have there, we could do something that would allow traffic to turn around, and also slow down that traffic coming in from Clarkdale. As far as the lighting goes in Old Town and beyond, there's nothing in that scope right now that provides for additional electrical service, lighting design, any extension of that Old Town nature from beyond where it exists already. The only lighting included would be at intersections and at the crosswalks, where we currently have the flashing lights for the crosswalks from Mingus on South.
Any other questions?
Mr. Reddell, it answers my questions. I just, again, if there's an opportunity, if we are buying, you know, light poles, that we just try to, again, continue with that same theme, so that it is apparent it's a separate district of the rest of cotton at that extent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, we will bring to work sessions the design as it progresses, and everyone will have an opportunity to take a look at it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Well, then, I will move to approve and award the proposed contract for Main Street Design Services to Point Engineers for a not-to-exceed fee of $564,711.
Second.
The Vice Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Matthews seconded it. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Curat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naren?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky? I've got out of order. Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Well, as long as you get to all of us, I think that's all that matters.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're on to number six. Resolution number 3143, declaring the city's official intent to reimburse itself from the proceeds of future debt obligations for expenses incurred in connection with the completion and build-out of the building located at 635 North Main Street for use as a new city hall.
Yes, Vice Mayor Naren. What we have before us, and we've done this five times in the last 20-plus years that we've been around, that Kirsten and I have been around, at least. All this is, is a backstop, in case we decide to go ahead and finance any of the portion of the new city hall construction. Because we're funding a lot of it up front, we want to make sure that if there's any issues in the future with finances or revenues streams, we want to make sure that if council decides to go ahead and finance any portion, it can also reimburse itself for any monies that has already been put into the particular project. It's just a backstop.
Okay.
That sounds like a good option to keep open.
Any questions or discussion from council? Okay.
Motion.
Sure.
I move to approve Resolution 3143.
Second.
Councilmember Matthews made the motion, and Councilmember Carratt seconded it. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Curat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naren?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And if you would please read Resolution number 3143 by title only.
Resolution number 3143, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, declaring for purposes of Section 1.150-2 of the Federal Treasury Regulations, official intent to be reimbursed in connection with certain capital expenditures relating to the build-out of the building located at 635 North Main Street, Cottonwood, Arizona, for use as a new city hall office complex. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. So, item number seven is Discussion on Possible Legal Action Regarding the City's Prosecution Code Enforcement Services Contract. That goes along with the next item on the list for executive session. That says pursuant to ARS 38431O3A3 and/or A4, the council may vote to convene an executive session and consult with the city attorney and staff regarding the city's prosecution and code enforcement contract and services and related matters, and provide direction to staff regarding those matters. So, I will move to resolve into, go into executive session.
Second.
Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Wildin seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.